I'd like to call River State Township Board of Trustees Agenda for November 18, 2014 together. Jan, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the board.
Clerk Earl Clark?
Here. No, I'm not a clerk.
Trustee Earl Clark, I apologize, Jan.
I'm here too. He's here too.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Here.
Trustee Easeman?
Here.
Supervisor Tusha?
Here.
Let the record know that trustee Clark is not in attendance at seven p.m. this evening and clerk Flowers is not in attendance.
Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes of October 14, 2014, Board of E- Do I hear a second?
I second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Earl Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Trustee Easeman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion here.
Communications.
We have, um, well, one is the, um, the legal for blood transfusion identity theft, which is going to take place on Saturday, um, November 22nd at 2:00 p.m. in the Riverside Township Hall, um, from the Riverside Police, and then we'll be going on this Saturday. And we also have two letters, we got some donations to our food pantry, one of which was from the Riverside Women's Reading Club, they donated a check for $100. And, uh, friends in the library of North Riverside, uh, they donated $144 to our food pantry. And that concludes the communications for this evening.
We just got another check for $50 from Mr. Guzzo from town, who lives in Saskatchewan. Okay, these are good remarks. Okay, but I, you're on the agenda for the grant, so, okay. No supervisors' report, um, trustees' reports.
I, I have something I just wanted to comment on, and maybe everyone has seen this, but I brought, made copies of this. It was in the current, um, if you would pass that, man, magazine from TOI, that we have a new requirement starting January 1st, actually have 90 days to comply, that units of local government serving a population of less than 1 million, uh, and maintain a, an internet website other than social media or social networking, have to post an email address so that members of the public can electronically communicate with elected officials. And with this, I've kind of underlined the pertinent parts of this article, and it can be one, it could be a board member, it can be several, but at least one email address has to be on the website. So, um, and if you look on the second page, that last paragraph, uh, it says, "A single email address for the unit of government could be posted and monitored for the sole purpose of complying with this requirement," et cetera. And, you know, my own feeling about it would be that we just set up one email address that...
Well, we've already got the, um, the township email.
That's on there, does it say if you have any...
Um, I can't remember.
Well, maybe check that, if, uh, you know, if there's one that's a general one, and it says you may correspond with, um, elected officials by...
Well, then, you know, I'm the only one who's got, got the password and stuff to get in, and I, you know, I look at it every day, and I, you know, if there's any address to anybody or all of you, I'll just print it out and put it in your box.
Yeah, no, I think one is sufficient, it's just that it needs to be monitored, so in case someone does communicate.
Yeah, I look at it every day.
Well, does it have to be publicized?
We could do it in the newsletter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can, yeah, well, yeah, I don't think that's a requirement, it's just that you need to put it on your website.
Yeah, okay.
That this is the, uh, address you can use to contact any member of the township board.
Sounds good, okay. Any other trustees' reports? Hearing none. Menel House Board reports, got anything to say, Mary?
Oh, I had a question, have you heard anything back from, um, Leslie Polonick from North Riverside, or...
Unfortunately, there's, she didn't respond to my email.
Oh dear.
The mother wanted, and she's still not responding, so I haven't talked, and it just said, and her husband's saying, "Oh, but I mean, it's quite not good," so I haven't had a chance to...
And I, we mailed out the letter, and we haven't heard back.
Yeah, I know you wrote her...
She's very, she's got a lot on her plate right now. Is this hands over, or how?
Yeah, I just wondered if she responded to your letter.
No, but I think we should give her some more time since everything that's going on with her.
It's unagreeable, like, you know...
Because she, you know, she will be a very good representative.
Yeah, she seemed interested, and she had a good background for it, but no response yet from her, and all these problems.
Anything else?
Okay, I'll report that tomorrow, no, nothing that...
Old business, township levy, do I, um, appro-?
Motion?
Nominate, not nomination.
Motion.
Motion, thank you. Brand cramp here because of the goal, we sent the previous approval of the final, of the draft that was done on, um, last month?
So, so move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, do I hear, um, approval, um...
Well, let's vote on that.
Oh, roll call.
Okay, the motion was to rescind, to rescind the previous...
The previous approval.
On the draft.
Right.
Well, it was, put in as final.
The approved, yeah.
The levy that was, um, provided at the October meeting.
I thought we were approving the draft, though.
No, that was the final draft, and we, that was...
Final draft.
And we decided that was the levy.
Okay.
And you second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Trustee Easeman?
Yes.
Trustee Earl Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion here, to rescind.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, what, Jan?
Have I, have I made a motion to approve the final draft, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, uh, final draft, the final draft, um, mark 10/27/14. John made the, the motion.
Second.
Ian seconded, any questions, concerns?
I just have a comment, um, considering what my communications were with, um, the county clerk's office and DeMonte's office, I couldn't understand why, um, they didn't, at a minimum, take the extension amount on the other funds, on, um, the town fund and the GA fund. I mean, it's close, but it's not even the extension.
Well, you talked to him, you should have been asking that, didn't you?
Well, you seemed to think these were all okay last month.
Yeah.
I knew there was something wrong with, uh, with mental health, because that, that number just didn't make any sense. Um, and then when I went and looked at it closely at all of them, I mean, it was close, um, but not quite, I mean, it's probably within $100, but, you know, most people take more than the extension and more than the, uh...
But we didn't want to take any, you know, we didn't want to put that burden on that in the tax papers, since we don't need it, you know, as of right now, we're doing fine.
I understand.
And I say, "As of right now."
I understand.
We don't know what's going to go on in the future.
Well, you don't, and you realize that you can never recover that.
Right.
So, you need to always keep that in mind whenever you're looking at these levies.
Do I, um, there is a motion to second, and questions or concerns answered, um, roll call.
Trustee Earl Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Easeman?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion here, can we, uh, draft for annual tax levy?
Dated 10/27/14.
14, yes, correct.
Okay, new business. Riverside Chamber Cable Commission Intergovernmental Agreement and Grant, the, um, cable commission's asking for $2,450, and along with is a copy of last year's, um, intergovernmental agreement, which, you know, if approved, I'll have them change the dates on there, and sign off.
How did it went up?
Harvey?
Why did it go up such, so greatly?
Can you explain, do you want?
Yes, please do.
Eric, something we able to ensure for Riverside, uh, basically what we've been doing over the last year, actually year and a half, is upgrading all of our materials and also adding production assistance, and there's payments made to these gentlemen, and also, uh, taking, uh, these, uh, lectures, whatever, we're, uh, everything we've been taking, we've been putting it onto YouTube, and then we also have website Riverside TV, and of course, we shoot a lot of this stuff live, and if not live, then we have it going on during schedule hours during the week, and basically, we had to upgrade a lot of our equipment, uh, the trikots, the cameras, the switches, uh, and also just like some of the production that we've been improving it so that it has good quality, might have to be played off of YouTube, and since the beginning of the year, we had 20,000 views on the YouTube stuff we have, uh, definitely a lot of this District 96, there's also you and for trustee Riverside also looking at it, and because of that, and because of upgrading equipment, we had to ask for additional money, but some of you will give this if we're having that.
Your account, did you sign it?
Did, yeah, we've signed it.
You did?
Okay, I've signed it, you do?
And, and how do you spell it last name?
Uh, that's S-U-N-D-S-T-I-R-L-A-S-T.
Um, quick question, you know, we've been putting on once every month and once every other month programs, who do we see about getting it taped, if we want it, you know, taped?
Um, if you want me to ask, Craig, where's the cable commissioner?
Yeah, but, you know, half the time you guys aren't around, I mean, you know, you, if you understand what I'm saying, it's hard to get a hold of you. Can we just relay it to the cameraman who can relay it?
Sure.
Okay, be a lot easier, you know?
Yeah, and, and like, we, we meet, uh, over at the library, uh, it's the first Monday of, uh, every month, we're always there, uh, plus, like I said, also, there's a, like, email address, but I can leave it with the professors, if you want to call us, and...
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, I just wanted to make sure it's okay.
Oh, yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay.
So, would that be...
And we started having our professors, it's kind of, so they get computers, feedback what's going on.
Okay.
Would that be included in the price if we ended up doing that, or would we have to...
No, that would be fine. Like I said, this is an ask, not very, because of production systems, but if you have, like, actually, we factored in some, like, two special shoes that might require as part of the deal.
For, for the, our meetings, yeah, right, right, right.
If you have additional that you need, besides where it was, that's factored in.
All right, well, you know, my concerns are, you know, programs that we'll be putting on, that we have put on, such as, uh, the Japanese internment camp, the, what was the one that Mary Brown put on that was very successful?
Oh, that was the...
The Holocaust survivors' pump.
The children of the Holocaust.
Yeah, children of the Holocaust, I mean, you know, those, you know, those probably would be very interesting to put on, and I don't remember if they were filmed or not, do you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They were?
I don't remember getting out of bed this morning, so, you know...
Could I just ask, um, did the villages rate go up comparably?
Oh, well, sure.
Okay, so...
Actually, within District 96.
Okay, so everybody that you helped...
They're always looking for us to do it, and I like to do it for them, too.
Okay.
And the more we do, the more we have to have for the production assistance and for everything else that goes on, uh, besides that, and I don't know if you ever watched it, but we have scanning what we're doing, too. We have put cartoons on in the morning on Saturdays, putting it back where it like we used to be over the past.
Oh, no.
And then we have, um, movies on Friday and Saturday next Thursday at 10:00.
Now, did you say earlier that you, 'cause I sort of missed this, did you, do you pay your production assistance?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, and you need more of them now, you're saying, because you're doing more?
Well, probably, okay, in fact, uh, the secretary has been saying that we're going to probably redo our whole structure, and we're going to have, like, besides production systems, we're going to have, like, add production systems and coordinates on the way we're working out, that way it's a little bit more structured, and it'll be easier.
And all that's going to be in this $2,450, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, anything that you did for the township would be included in this agreement?
Yes, it would.
I make a motion that we grant Riverside Township, Riverside Cable Commission $2,450 for regular taping of Riverside Township meetings, plus two special taping.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yes, it wouldn't be the cable commission, the agreements with the village.
Right.
So, we're actually...
The organization here.
But we're paying the village for doing this.
All right, the village of Riverside, and that's changed into the village of Riverside. But we can't grant...
No, but we have an intergovernmental agreement, yes, pursuant to which you may.
Okay, then it stands.
Any other, um, questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Trustee Earl Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Easeman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion here.
Um, next grant request is for Agent Care for their annual $5,000, um, grant. Do I hear a motion?
Wait, you know that we gave them $2,000 earlier this year, though.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's in May of 2014, we gave them.
Yeah, this year.
So, you know, um, do I hear a motion for granting the $5,000? Hearing none, do I hear a motion of granting $3,000?
I make a motion, we grant them $3,000.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Earl Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Trustee Easeman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion here for $3,000.
I am missing in my packet a list of all the grants we gave over the years, do you have that, will be in yours?
Yeah.
Harvey, Jan, I can't hear you.
I'm, I don't have in my packet that whole, uh, list of grants that we have given out over the years, to compare this to, it's not in my packet.
I've got one.
But if you look at the form, the request form Andrew put down all of the previous years, going back to...
No, I understand that, but I still like to refer...
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Township grants, here, you want this one, Jan?
Uh, well, I would like a copy in my book, yeah.
Here, well, take this one for now and keep it, but, you know...
You can get another one?
Um, up next is a grant for beds plus care And in the pa- we haven't given anything since 213, oh, no, 212, I'm sorry.
I, I see 211 in the first year, huh?
Yeah, we gave one at 212 for 880, 210 for 500, 209 for 250.
See, they don't, it's not listed on there.
Well, it was on...
It's not listed on the...
Vivius Grants Awarded, Jan.
Yeah, I know, you're, you're, you're correct, but it's, it's not on the thing.
Well, go by this, because Andrew actually...
He's here on the list, how much did you say, was that there?
It's on my list, John.
I don't have that. What did they do to my packet here?
It's down?
I see it here.
Let's just go with, give it to the sky.
Okay, they're asking for a grant for 3,500. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we grant, um, beds plus care, Inc., $3,500.
Do I hear a second? No second, so... It falls.
Well, can we make another motion?
Well, it failed for a second, but is, does somebody want to make a, a different motion?
Well, we did give them $880, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant beds plus $880, that was the highest that we've done before.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call. 880, Jan?
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Trustee Earl Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Easeman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion here to grant beds E80.
I do not have that grant request in my packet.
I'm sorry, Jan, I gave you one.
No, 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 the grant request, I have all the stuff on beds plus, but I don't have the grant request.
I, I don't know what to say.
I understand.
Andrew would know, he puts them together.
I will do that.
Um, do I hear a motion to grant Hollywood School PTA $1,000?
So...
Do I hear a second? Okay, do I hear a motion for anything less?
Yes.
We haven't given Hollywood PTA anything since 2011, and that was $1,500 in 2011.
Does that agree with our records? Yes, it does.
Anybody reconsider the $1,000 grant?
Why wouldn't we want to do that? Like, normally we'll second that.
Yeah, I'll, we got time to second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
For $1,000.
For $1,000.
Any...
If anyone purchased this playground equipment, they'd have to...
Well, it's a not-for-profit, we had a second?
Yeah.
My concern with this is...
Who's going to put it in?
Right, and technically, you know, we should be monitoring that work.
How are we going to monitor it?
Well, you, there are reports, there's reports that the contractors are supposed to give you, and, um, I mean, it's not just like giving them, you know, X number of dollars to, um, some school project that the kids are doing.
Yeah, but when you say monitor, I thought you meant we're supposed to go out there?
No, no, not physically, but, you know, by paper, you know, getting, um, reports on, you know, what they're spending, that, how is the work being done, the, um...
Are you saying to be sure that they use the money that way?
No, um, not that they use it that way, just that, um, I can't remember the word, I'm searching for a word right now that's escaping me, um, I, I'm not going to think of it.
There was follow-up.
Do they have to provide prevailing wage information, something like that?
Well, that would be one thing, it would be that, all of that...
Yeah, if it's an outside contractor, right.
Yeah, but, but it, it goes along with the prevailing wage business, the, uh, the requirements that, um, you're, you're kind of watching over the way that it's been done to make sure that, you know, they're paying the people doing it properly, if there are subcontractors that they're being paid, um, that kind of thing, and I cannot think of a word right now, but, anyway, I, I just have some concerns about, you know, this particular use of these funds.
Like playground equipment? You, you got concerns about playground equipment yet?
Because of the installation of it, and the, that part of it, who's putting it in, how are they putting it in, are they, are they, are they using contractors that, you know, are complying with prevailing wage, um, all that stuff, you know, they should...
Why, why would that be our responsibility? It's the PTA asking for the money, not the school, the PTA.
I know, but if you're giving them the money...
Yeah?
Or part of the money, it's probably, they probably need more than $1,000, but because you're involved.
But once we grant them the money, we're done.
Well, not really, yes and no, I suppose.
Then it's up to them, as their organization, to make sure that they're using the prevailing wage act and so forth.
What did you say, Jan, I couldn't hear you.
I said, "Once we give them the money, it's up to this Hollywood School PTA to make sure that they're aligned with the prevailing, uh, wage act and everything."
Right, I agree with you, right, because they are basically doing it for a government...
Exactly, we're just granting them the money.
I agree with you, Jan. So, is that, that's how you want to do it, to let the PTA...
Well, I, I, my, 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 my,[1642.13]
Trustee Giesmer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Leary?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion carried for a thousand dollars for the Hollywood PTA.
Now, the Hollywood Citizens Association requesting a grant for a thousand dollars for the, basically the upkeep of the Hollywood Community House for repairs and continued maintenance for the historical Hollywood House. Do I hear a motion to grant them a thousand dollars?
I make a motion to grant them seven hundred and fifty, and I know prices are going up, to the Hollywood Citizens Association for repairs and continued maintenance of the Hollywood House.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear any other, um, requests for grants? I'd like to make a motion to request a thousand dollars. Or we just did?
I said seven fifty.
John said seven fifty.
Because mostly what it was given was five hundred before, so I was kind of going in the middle.
Well, we didn't give anything in two thirteen.
Why do they include on their application a thousand dollars for two thousand fourteen?
There are a lot of grant requests for a thousand dollars.
We didn't give them a thousand dollars.
What, Wayne?
We did not give them a thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen.
Wayne is referring to the list here, and awarded is the past tense, implying that we had already given them a thousand dollars.
Well, that's an error.
Well, the reason I think they're asking is because we didn't give anything in two thirteen, and we've always given like five hundred, so it's two thirteen and two fourteen for a thousand dollars.
No, in February we did. In February we did, on my list. In February, we, yeah, granted them a thousand dollars.
In fourteen, on two thousand fourteen?
Right. It's on my list. A thousand dollars.
Yes.
And this is from Andrew. Andrew does this to kind of give us, you know, some, so he picked that up.
The Hollywood Citizens Association, you're showing a thousand dollars? I don't show it here.
Yes, it is.
Not on this list.
Maybe your list is...
Well, here it is, down here. I'm sorry. Oh, there's two different, oh, okay. There's a center and the association, and they stuck the center in the middle of that list. This has to be redundant.
But this is the association.
Exact, right.
Anyway.
But you look two lines up, and you see Community Center three times, and then another whole list of associations.
Hollywood Community Center?
I see Hollywood Community Center here twice. One for six hundred dollars and two thousand.
I don't remember Hollywood Community Center.
We've given them a thousand dollars this year, but I think we ought to move on to the next grant.
I think we should too. I didn't realize that, that we had given them a thousand.
Don't we apply in two fifteen?
Right.
Um, do I hear a motion to grant the North Riverside Seniors Organization five thousand dollars? Last time we granted the, they were like, North Riverside Golden Ages, basically. Five thousand was in two twelve.
I'd make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Giesmer?
Um, call me last, please.
Trustee O'Leary?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion carried to grant North Riverside Seniors Organization a thousand dollars.
I don't see them on our list.
It's under North Riverside Golden Ages. They changed the name to Seniors now. Look under North Riverside Golden Ages.
And last time was in two thousand twelve. Yes, North Riverside Golden Ages.
Okay.
Um, Riverside Township Radio Players. Um, they're asking for, um, a grant, uh, for nineteen hundred and ninety-five dollars for new cameras and stuff. I know they, John Jelcimino's been mentioning this for a while, and I said, "Well, you know, until you basically, you know, your cameras are, you know..."
They're, it's gone.
...in a heck of a handbag.
It is. I underst, I go to their shows a lot.
Yeah.
And they do a good job.
Yeah.
And their attendance is...
High.
High, yeah. People like them. I happened to be at the last one, and he mentioned that it's gotten to the point where he's actually had to borrow another camcorder. So, this one has bit the dust or, what is it for? I, I know that, you know, they...
They need one.
Yeah, and there's not a lot of money left in their, the line item in their, for the budget for them.
Think they get eleven hundred dollars, eleven twenty or something?
Well, it says eleven twenty on this report, but according to DeMonte's report, it's a little, it's more than that. It's closer to two thousand, even after you deduct, like, the last two payments here.
So what are you suggesting then?
I mean, what we could do...
See, that's basically, it's not really the radio players. That's the township's camera.
Well, we could, we could purchase it.
Yes, which we would have to, and it'd be under township, but let them take care of it.
We could purchase it and then, and not bring it out of that line item, or we could transfer two thousand dollars into that line item and then purchase it after...
Why don't we just purchase it as township equipment?
We could do that.
And then rather than doing all these inter-line item transfers, just do this township equipment.
Yeah.
Cool.
We could do that.
That's my suggestion.
And do that, but I would probably...
Because it, you know, when Jelcimino leaves, he doesn't take the camera. When the radio players leave, they don't take the camera. I mean, they're a...
It's stored here.
Well, and, you know, if we want to use it, we use it.
Okay.
Um, do I hear a motion for that, that we take it out of, uh, township equipment?
I don't like that motion, that grant comes out of township equipment.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any other questions or concerns?
And I presume this, the information that was provided here is what they think would be...
Yes, that's, yeah.
Appropriate.
Right. Roll call.
Trustee O'Leary?
Yes.
Trustee Giesmer?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion to purchase as equipment for the township, um, for B and H photo video recorder at nineteen ninety-five. Motion carried.
Um, do I hear a motion for Riverside Chamber, uh, for the holiday stroll that we, we get Mr. D's magic show for four hundred and fifty dollars, which we've done in the past?
So.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Kibitzky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesmer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Leary?
Yeah.
Supervisor Tusha?
Yes.
Motion carried to pay for the magician, four hundred and fifty dollars for the holiday stroll of two thousand fourteen. Motion carried.
Okay, now, the Chamber has...
I have a suggestion before we move on.
I can't hear you, Jen.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
In the, uh, what I think we should consider, when we received a grant application from an organization like Aging Care and Beds Plus, which both have employees with salaries, that we ask them to provide us with a financial report for the last, some, the past year, and let us see their financial status. The financial report tells an awful lot about an organization.
I think Aging Care provided one, Wayne.
I didn't see it. Well, they provided one for the national organization. What I'm saying is, I'd like to see a, a report for the individual office that we're granting the money to.
I think we're granting it to the national organization, which comes down. Is that, you know?
Yes, we're actually listening for the, our, 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 the, 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 the information. We have, 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 we have,
Motion carried to buy a purchase for $3,660, the PDS unit from Riverside Home.
Okay. Under FYI, you've got mental health, township health insurance renewal. It has gone up considerably.
I'll say.
What has it?
Yeah. And then also, which the board is going to be paying, you know, the 80 percent. Employees pay 20. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I got a question.
Yeah.
Does Sue McDonald pay her full share?
Yes.
Yeah, she writes a check every month.
Every month. Total amount.
This identity theft, what room is this going to be in?
I can't hear you.
What room will this identity theft program be in?
The auditorium.
The auditorium.
Okay. Do I hear any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
For what?
The increase, paying the increase.
That's under FYI.
But we should be still making a motion, I think.
If we can, I will.
Okay.
It's not under new business, though.
It's not under new business.
So we should put it under new business next month?
Well, the motion that was attached, it's indefinite, the way it was written the last time. So I think the thing is, if we want to reconsider the amount that, you know, the split, then we should do a new... You know, put it on the agenda for a motion whenever, you know, before the next renewal period. But the way it stands right now, that previous approval of the 80/20 stands.
Yeah, okay.
It's just that...
Well, you want to continue then?
Yes.
I assume...
Okay, so we could...
Well, you know, my concern because of the increase, if anyone gets any.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Identity theft flyer, you see that this Saturday? Okay, any further visitors' remarks? Hearing none.
Did she... Did you want to speak about aging care?
I just say I hate this one. I just hate it. I don't consider it possible. I had a lot of changes this past year, and I don't... If you have questions, ever, please do ask.
And you'll leave your card with Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of warrants.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Ian?
No, I'm... Just one second. Okay. I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant November 2014 in the amount of $13,793.38, as presented to the board this 18th day of November 2014.
Second of all.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Oder?
Yes.
Supervisor Tashin?
Yes.
Motion carried to general warrants in the amount of $13,793.38.
Next, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant November 2014 in the amount of $1,297.19. Payroll warrant November 2014 in the amount of $16,359.76. Health warrant November 2014 in the amount of $2,544.57. Monthly filings November 2014 in the amount of $4,125.21. Grants November 2014 in the amount of $250. Petty cash November 2014 in the amount of $145.30 for the period July 9, 2014 through November 18, 2014. General assistance warrant November 2014 in the amount of $1,200. Township radio players warrant November 2014 in the amount of $120. Food pantry warrant November 2014 in the amount of $419.52. All of the above as presented to the board this 18th day of November 2014.
Do I hear...
Second of all.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Oder?
Yes.
Supervisor Tashin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, approval of warrants is done. Okay, supervisor's comments and reviews. This is what we're planning on handing out in the holiday stroll, set of candy chains. So it's a stamp, a kid's stamp, a good stamp.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thought it would be something different.
All right. Pass it that way. Thank you.
Okay, also starting tomorrow, Thanksgiving Day, turkeys, you know, dinners will be started handing out until Friday. What we have done was, we know who usually... Well, we know who's on the general assistance. We've put aside labels for general assistance on the turkeys and the meals to make sure that the general assistance people get those. And then we know the normal amount of people that we have come in on a regular basis for the food pantry, which they will... We labeled their names onto them, too. So if anybody's coming in after two or three months, it's first come, first served. I mean, you know, and there aren't that many going to be coming in because we cut back.
I thought we're drawing a parallel on the general assistance requirements as to who would get these turned in.
We have been doing that, John, and you keep asking that, and I keep telling you, yeah.
I need to be told.
Oh, you need to be reserved, okay. Anytime, John.
Supervisor Tashin, who is the distributor?
Starting Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
This week?
Okay.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, next of all.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.